The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
I was looking at that clock and it says two till. I know, Adam had the right clock. Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 23rd Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. We can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mario, can you do roll call? Thank you.
Yep. Chairwoman Lauren McGowan. Vice Chairman Kamar Williams.
President.
Commissioner David Leland.
Here.
Commissioner Kara Derry.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Miller.
Here.
Okay. Okay, so I'll call for approval of the minutes of the May 28, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the May 28th meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Leland. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimous. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is application number 24-055 AAR Village Shops Facade Phase Four. The applicant JBL Village Shops LLC is requesting architecture approval to modify the existing building facades for a property located at 10469 Southern Boulevard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could, is the applicant here? Can you go to the podium over there for me, sir? Is there somebody else from your team that's on remotely? Okay, Mario, do you have anybody online that you see?
Yeah, we have an attendee, Michael Rem.
Michael, Mr. Rem, can you hear me? Is he unmuted, Mario, on your end?
He's unmuted.
Hello? Good evening. Thank you.
This is, I'm gonna swear you and your colleague who's here in person in tonight. This is a quasi-judicial matter. So can you raise your right hand for me, sir, and you also, sir, and Mr. Ledger, you as well? Raise your right hands for me. Do you all swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rem, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll ask the Planning and Zoning Commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Joe Su, Ledger, Planning and Zoning. Application before you is 24-055. The applicant is requesting architectural approval to modify the existing facades for the property located at 10469 Southern Boulevard. This request includes minor modifications to the previously approved Phase Four for the development. This slide illustrates the proposed materials and paint color, which is consistent with the previously approved Phase Four. This slide illustrates the proposed elevation. Staff is recommending approval of application number 24-055 AAR. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation?
We just wanted to make a few comments, if that's okay.
Yeah, please go.
Good evening. My name is Michael Rem. I'm joining from online. My wife is 39 weeks and six days pregnant, so I wasn't able to join you in person today. But I appreciate your time tonight. I'm the managing principal for JBL Development, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, JBL Village Shops. Joe Su did an excellent job summarizing the project before you today. And, you know, I appreciate his time, and I thank you and everyone here for your time as well tonight. So I kind of won't go into too much detail. As Joe Su mentioned, this is a minor modification to previously approved modifications. But I just wanted to kind of explain why we're here requesting these modifications. And the short and sweet of it is that when we hired a contractor to do the previously approved work, we realized that this work, that this building was actually very similar to the access to that building, which is elsewhere on our property and previously improved under a different approval. Whereas we had originally anticipated that the construction type was more similar to different buildings on the property, which was a bit of a mismatch. So we're just, we're using the same kit of parts, but we're deploying them in a manner that's consistent with the access to that building rather than some of the other buildings on site, just because of their kind of original construction typology. So the, you know, these changes are very minor aesthetically, but the village's building department and planning and zoning departments are tireless advocates on behalf of your and the public interest. And so we're here tonight to update our AAR documents just to match exactly the planned construction documents with the AAR documents. That's my explanation. I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you. I'll turn it back to the board for any questions or comments. No? Okay.
Congratulations to you and your wife.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? No? Okay. Then I will, is there a motion for this application?
I move to approve application 24-055 AAR.
Thank you. Motion made by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All in favor? All opposed? Passes unanimous. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two on the agenda is application number 24-029 SPM University Center. The applicant Cutler and Herring on behalf of Belvedere Road LLC is requesting a site plan modification approval to replace one parking spot and 10 feet of loading space northeast of Building C with a playground area, add 30,000 square foot medical office space within the development, add an electric vehicle charging station, benches, and bike racks, and modify the previously approved landscape for a property located at 9701 Belvedere Road.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, sir. Your name for the record?
George Missamer.
Thank you. This is a quasi-judicial item as well, so could you raise your right hand for me? And I'll swear you in. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you very much.
Josephine?
Madam Chair, application number 24-029. The applicant is seeking a major site plan modification in order to replace one parking spot and 10 foot of loading space northeast of Building C with a playground area and add 30,000 square feet of medical office space within the development, add an electric vehicle charging station, benches, and bike racks, and modify the previously approved landscape plan. On the screen here identifies the property, the building in question, Building C. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan indicating the intended use of Building C to be professional office as well as medical office. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to the village council regarding application number 24-029 and resolution number 24-09. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe Su. George, do you have a presentation?
Yeah, real quick, just to make a couple clarifying points. Joe Su did an excellent job. Again, my name is George Missamer with Cutler and Herring. We're making several modifications to this approved plans. We're not adding any building area. What we're doing is including medical office as an allowable use within the development. It was originally not included as part of the plan. The site does have adequate parking for medical office to occupy the building. It is up to 30,000 square feet. We are reducing the size of our loading zone just to the north of the building that was previously approved. The code minimum requirement is 45 feet long. It was approved at 55 feet long for no apparent reason. It's, the plan's been around for a little while. And we did that so that we could increase the size of the area that we wanted to install a little playground area for a potential user that we're trying to recruit to the facility. So that's really all we have. I can tell you the building, as you saw from the aerial. We're hoping to wrap that up within the next year. And it will be a beautiful addition to the village. But we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it back to the board to see if you have any questions.
No questions.
Super easy. You got off. Easy. Is there any members of the public who want to speak? Okay, great. Sir, if I could come to the podium.
And have him state his name and address if you would, Madam Chair. Thank you.
And sir, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Richard Cutler, 1100 Sanddrift Way, West Palm Beach, 23411. We are the very first house in the Sanddrift Villas community. When you come in the Belvedere Gate into Breakers West. And so that's why I got the letter, because I'm within, I guess, 300 feet of where that construction is going to be taking place. My major concern is what kind of noise level is this going to make? Especially with a playground in there and whatever, you know, else is going to be happening. I don't really have a major criticism. I just would like to know what we should be, you know, expecting. And is it going to be a, any kind of a noise increase from kids playing all the time or whatever? I don't, you know, we don't really know. We all, everybody obviously always thought that that building was going to be another college building. And it's turning out not to be. So with these changes, we're just, you know, hoping that we won't have a tremendous amount of noise. And the other question I had was, they're supposedly putting in an EV facility. And is that going to be open to the public? I mean, are they going to be allowed to come in and use that? Because that's going to cause a lot of traffic and more other noise. So that's my story.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
George, did you want to address any of?
Be happy to. We appreciate you coming in and asking the question. It's a very small playground facility that's an accessory to a user of the building. As I said, we were trying to include additional medical office, and one of those is a therapy, physical therapy of type, and one of their main clientele are children. And it's just, it's an area, it's not a daycare. It's not going to be going all day long. It's not actually a noise generator at all. The EV charger is an accessory for a user of the building. It's not intended to be public. Anyone can come in and charge their car. It's likely going to be occupied for most of the time by a tenant. If it is available, then there wouldn't be any restriction on it. But it is a dual charger. It has ADA access as well as standard vehicle access. But apart from that, if you have any follow-up questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And what'd be the hours of operation for the medical offices?
Standard business hours, eight-five for standard office hours. It was originally intended, one of the uses was professional office. We're just including medical office as another option, but standard business hours.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? No, seeing none. Okay. Is there a motion from the board?
Or just one comment. I realized in the backup, the applicant has agreed to this in his justification statement, but I would like for any motions that are made to approve this to add a condition, as Mr. Missamer said, and they've specifically put this in their justification statement, but I omitted to put it in the attachment to the document, that as he said, this additional medical office is not a daycare. So the language that they have in their justification statement already expressly agrees that it will not be used as a daycare. I would recommend that that language be also a condition in the development order. It says currently in his justification statement, the applicant has stated that this area will not be used for child daycare center, which is a special exception use within the CO zoning district. So Mr. Missamer, are you in agreement with that being a condition?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So any motion, you don't have to say exactly what I said. You can just say with the conditions stated as staff, stated by staff, I mean, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 24-029 with the condition that it will, try to match your words, Middy, will not be used as a daycare.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Derry. All those in favor? All opposed? Passes unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. The next item on the agenda, number three, application number 24-020 SPM AAR Mazda Car Wash and Detail Building. The applicant onsite civil group is requesting a site plan modification and architectural approval to construct a new car wash and detail building behind the existing Mazda car dealership for a property located at 9305 Southern Boulevard. Middy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is that you, sir? Can you go to the podium for me? Thank you. Same thing you've heard on the two previous applications. This is also quasi-judicial. Thank you, sir. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name for the record is? Thank you, and I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Su?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application before you is 24-020 SPM AAR. The applicant is requesting site plan modification and architectural approval to add a car wash and detail building to an existing vehicle sales and/or rental use on a 33.43 acre parcel located at 9305 Southern Boulevard within the limited industrial zoning district. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building, architectural color, materials, and landscape plan. Just a brief history on this, the subject property received site plan and special exception use approval for the site to be utilized for the three automobile dealership that's there now and was approved by the village council on October 6, 2005 through the adoption of resolution number 05-39. And shortly after, there were two subsequent minor site plan amendments approvals that took place on August 16, 2006, and February 15, 2007. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan. The new 3,225 square foot car wash and detail building is highlighted in red on the slide. No proposed changes to the existing access to the site. Therefore, access will remain as currently existing off of 95th Avenue and Sunshine Road. The applicant is also seeking architectural approval for the building, architecture, color, materials, and landscape plan. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan around the car wash. This slide illustrates the proposed elevations. This slide illustrates the proposed building, architecture, colors, and materials to be consistent with the existing Mazda dealership mint building. Staff requests a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council for application number 24-020 SPM AAR and resolution number 24-06. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a presentation?
No, ma'am, but just a couple things I wanted to say to y'all tonight. Again, thank you all for your time. If you're familiar with the Mazda dealership, we have two additional auto dealerships on either side of us. Both of those dealerships have washes with them now. In the industry, Renee will tell you, we're working around the country that the new trend is service and detailing. So we're being consistent with what we're seeing around the country to try to keep that service on the lot in the dealership. So as Joe Su said, we're looking to be consistent with materials that are there from the architectural side and from the civil site side. Nothing much is changing. We're on existing asphalt, existing water, sewer, storm. Everything is being utilized. So I think it'll be a real minimal disruption and fairly easy construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have, oh, we'll do commissioner comments.
No questions.
No? Okay, great. Is there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, then is there a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve application number 24-020.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Derry, second by Commissioner Leland. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it.
All right, moving on to item four, one of three related items, it looks like. So we have application 2310-104 PP Paint Lux Auto Body Plaid. The applicant Vincent Koffer of HM2V Inc. on behalf of AMG Business Enterprises LLC is requesting a preliminary plaid approval to add 0.25 plus or minus acres to the existing development for a total replatted area of 1.82 plus or minus acres for a property located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive. Middy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry for that language. It doesn't look that bad until I hear it out loud. That one. This application is actually a legislative matter, so I don't have to swear him in yet. I'll swear him in on the next one and get your ex partes on the next two, but this one, you can proceed right to Joe Su.
Okay, go ahead, Josephine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant is requesting a preliminary plaid approval to add 0.235 plus or minus acres to the existing development for a total replatted area of 1.825 plus or minus acre for a property located on 6846 Seminole Palm Drive. The site has a future land use designation of industrial and a zoning designation of industrial general. This application is being reviewed concurrently with a special exception application as well as a site plan application, which are also on the agenda for this evening. This slide illustrates the proposed plaid cover page. This slide illustrates the proposed plaid. This slide illustrate the third and last page of the proposed plaid. Section 22-22 preliminary plaid requirements, generally the plaid contains all of the information required. And section 26-93, for site development standards, the plaid, the plated property meets all dimensional requirements for the industrial zoning, general zoning district. The preliminary plaid is consistent with the proposed site plan application. Village staff is requesting a recommendation of approval be submitted to village council regarding application number 23-104 and adoption of resolution number 23-45. This concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a presentation for the plaid?
No. Pretty much to answer any questions that you might have. Joe Su did a great job there.
Madam Chair, if I could give you just a couple of brief comments. This commission may remember this site, but as you saw from Joe Su, when he put up the plaid, it's kind of a weird shaped property. So you remember this applicant, he actually bought half of the parcel that's on Seminole Palms from the village. So this is his plaid of not only that parcel, but we also asked them to plaid the rest of their property, which is unplatted. So that's why it's a larger area that's being platted. Because as you know, the village code requires them to incorporate the land that they purchased from the village into their existing development. So they're essentially going through the process to fulfill the obligations in the contract that they signed with the village. This is just three of those steps in the contract. So with that, I can answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions on the plaid? Great. There's really nobody here from the public. There's nobody online. Okay, so is there a motion for the plaid application?
Make a motion to approve application 23-104 as submitted.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion made by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Leland. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It passes unanimous. So then the next item in the series would be number five, application number 23-045 SE Paint Lux Auto Body. The applicant Vincent Koffer of HM2V Inc. on behalf of AMG Business Enterprises LLC is requesting special exception use approval for an automobile and/or watercraft repair and/or service within the industrial general IG zoning district to expand the current operation to the newly acquired 0.25 plus or minus acre parcel for a property located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive. Middy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one is quasi-judicial, so Mr. Kaffer, if you could raise your right hand for me? Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. I'll turn back to the commission for any ex parte disclosures on this item. Thank you very much.
Sorry. I had a momentary lapse. Go ahead, Josephine, for the presentation.
Application before you is 23-045. The applicant is requesting special exception use approval for an automobile and/or watercraft and/or service within the industrial general zoning district to expand the current operation to the newly acquired 0.235 acre parcel. The property is situated within the Royal Commerce Park Plan Industrial District and located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive. The proposed special exception is consistent with the policies and standards of the village comprehensive plan. The proposed special exception complies with all applicable development regulations of the village code, or it does not have any adverse environmental impact, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions. The proposed special exception does not have any adverse vehicular or pedestrian traffic impacts, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions. The special exception does not have an adverse impact upon public facilities. upon public facilities. The proposed special exception does not have any adverse impacts on adjacent properties and is compatible with the character and living conditions of the existing neighborhood. The proposed special exception does not have an adverse impact on property values in adjacent areas, which cannot be prevented by the imposition of conditions. The special exception is not a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent properties. The proposed special exception will not seriously reduce the quality or quantity of light and air available to adjacent properties. The following are site-specific conditions of approval. So, there are other conditions, but this is specifically to the site, so the special exception use approval shall become null and void should the operator, Paint Lux, cease operations at this location. Staff has determined that the proposed special exception conforms to the village standards and therefore is requesting a recommendation of approval be submitted to Village Council on application number 23-045 and Resolution Number 23-37. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Josu. Do you have a presentation, Mr. Kaffer?
No, thank you. For the special condition.
Okay. Does the board have any comments, questions?
No.
Okay. There's, anybody from the public want to speak? Seeing none. Is there a motion by the board?
I move to approve application number 23-045 SE.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seeing none, passes unanimous. Which brings us to our last item, applica- six, number six, application number 23-048 SPM Paint Lux Auto Body. The applicant, Vincent Kaffer of HM2V Inc., on behalf of AMG Business Enterprises LLC, is requesting a site plan modification in order to incorporate the newly acquired 0.25 plus or minus acres into the previously approved site plan for a property located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant has been sworn, so he remains sworn on this item. I'll just ask the Commission for any ex parte disclosures.
No.
Josu?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Application number 23-048. The applicant is requesting a site plan modification in order to incorporate the newly acquired 0.235 acre into the previously approved site plan for a property located at 6846 Seminole Palms Drive. The property is currently vacant, as shown on the slide. The applicant has indicated in her justification statement that the ultimate goal is to develop the property for enlarging the existing Paint Lux facility parking lot. This slide illustrates the proposed site plan, indicating the added parking lot, highlighted in green. This slide illustrates the plan details in large. This slide illustrates the proposed landscape plan around the proposed parking lot. The followings are site-specific conditions of approval for the proposed use and site plan. There shall be no outside storage of any equipment or materials related to the operations of Paint Lux, including vehicles requiring paint and/or collision repair services. Condition B, the 0.235 plus or minus acre parcel shall not be fenced off from the main Paint Lux facility and shall at all times be incorporated into the main Paint Lux operation. The proposed, the project is subject to and shall remain consistent with the provisions of the Palm Beach County Traffic Concurrent Standards. The site shall be maintained free of all trash at all time. The signs shall meet all of the dimensional requirements of the village code. This concludes my presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. This is your last chance. Do you want to give a presentation?
Who am I better than Josu?
Is there any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Any members of the public? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application number 23-048.
Great, second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Derry, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Passes unanimous. Thank you, sir. So, that concludes this meeting. The next meeting for Planning and Zoning Commission will be on Tuesday, August 27, 2024, and my thing says that I need to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No, you don't need to ask for it.
It says it on here.
I, I, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Following the instructions.